2023 Meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Commissioner Steinberger, Vice Chair. Tonight, the Commission will consider the following items. Ordinance to vacate public alley located between North Randolph Street and North Quincy Street has been withdrawn. There will be no discussion on this item. An ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance with various articles. Site plan amendment to site plan number 13, Crystal City Towers. I'd like to share a few logistical points for virtual participants and/or commissioners participating remotely. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast, Xfinity, Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon, Vias Channel 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meetings, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls and you speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you'll be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as an individual and three minutes to comment as a representative of an organization or county board-appointed advisory group. A timer will be displayed on the screen when speaking virtually. Speakers in person will follow the timer on the podium. If you're dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning. You'll be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, can you please call our first item?
We begin with item number four, which is a withdrawn item. This is an ordinance to vacate an alley behind the Arlington Service Center between North Randolph and North Quincy Street. Matt, do you have a withdrawal report to read that?
I don't think we have.
Do you need to do that? Okay. So, Madam Chair, as stated, this item is withdrawn and is not open for further discussion. Item number five is Z O A dash 2023 dash 08, F B C dash 31, and N dash F B C dash 18. Again, this is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify sections of the Arlington County zoning ordinance. We have Valaway Weiner and Mark McCully here from A E D Real Estate to present this item.
Thank you. When you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Val Weiner. I'm a commercial development specialist with Arlington's Economic Development Department. I am here with Mark McCully, the Director of the Real Estate Development Group, as part of the Commercial Market Resilience Team to talk about updates to the zoning code, specifically as it pertains to expanding existing concepts of food delivery, shared commercial kitchens, as well as updating some food-related terminology throughout the code. Oh, is it not working? Technical difficulties, one second. Sorry. Okay. Apologies. Okay. Sorry about that. So, this is an agenda overview of what we will be going over today. I wanted to provide some context for the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative. You've heard quite a bit about this initiative by now, but I wanted to provide a comprehensive list of the uses we've been able to get approval for and update in the code. This initiative's approach is focused on updates only to the zoning code. I'll mention throughout the presentation, there are a number of departments working concurrently with zoning to regulate all aspects of the uses we are talking about today in order to complement the work we're doing. To provide some context, this is where specifically we are talking about for these recommendations, only the commercial mixed-use and industrial districts that are outlined in blue on this map of Arlington. So, to start, our first recommendation pertains to how food delivery is treated in the zoning code as compared to how it functions in our urban environment. Food delivery services are an essential tool for businesses, especially coming out of the pandemic, but even before the pandemic, food delivery was a quickly growing and dynamic service that's changed significantly over time, especially compared to when it was introduced to the code in 1988. Since 1988, the use food delivery service and how it's treated in the code has not changed to reflect this new market, and the requirements associated with the food delivery use permit since the 80s focus more on managing the service, which has become more difficult as third-party delivery services grow in popularity. So, some of the principles behind this recommendation are driven by this new food delivery market. These tech-driven third-party delivery services have been great for the overall sector, but can threaten individual business resilience. Part of their business model is cutting into a food business's revenue. That's how they make their money, and this can impact a business's resilience to shifts in the market like another pandemic, God forbid. They also have a unique impact on the urban environment. They're more difficult to regulate through zoning because they're not associated with a specific land use, only with an individual or a private company's vehicle. There are, however, county departments that are dedicated to regulating and monitoring all delivery drivers outside of zoning. So, for example, the Department of Environmental Services Performance Parking Pilot will help gather data and create a library of information on short-term parking spots to help with regulation and signage, among other things. In addition, the continuity of governance ordinance, relaxed regulation, and enforcement of services like food delivery, and that is ending in August of 2023, we would like to provide businesses some guidance upon that time. So, our recommendation based on this new food delivery market is that food delivery service be a byright accessory use to food establishments in commercial mixed-use and industrial districts. The goal is to support business resilience by leveling the playing field and responding to existing market trends. This recommendation will not get in the way of other departments' ability to regulate the service, and this approach is really reacting to what is happening in Arlington today and what we believe will continue to happen in the future. Our next recommendation is on shared commercial kitchens. This use was introduced to the code in November 2021. Update to the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code Ground Story Uses update as a byright use without use standards. Staff believes that the definition that was established at the time describes a type of shared commercial kitchens. Our recommendation is to expand this definition to include a full spectrum of business types that already exist in Arlington. We've identified three -- we've broken it down into three basic categories. The baseline model, which is the most common model you think of when you think of a shared commercial kitchen. This model offers additional services like retail, incubator services, onsite dining, and then the limited and open-air model. The essential difference, as shown by these very simplified icons, is that the limited and open-air models do not provide these additional services that give that public activation. So, to give some more -- to be a little more specific, the expanded definition of the shared commercial kitchen basically takes what was intended in the 2021 Form-Based Code update and adds a little more detail to specify these additional services like retail, incubator courses, and onsite dining. This model as a whole supports business resilience by offering low-cost, flexible rental kitchen spaces for new businesses and growing businesses that could not have otherwise afforded a brick-and-mortar space on their own. We believe because of this use's capacity for public engagement, it should be a byright use in commercial mixed-use and industrial districts with a minimum 5% gross floor area dedicated to these more active spaces, and this is to help differentiate it from a limited shared commercial kitchen, which I'll go over in a second. Some regional examples, regional successful examples of this model are Union Kitchen in DC and Kitchen of Purpose in Arlington. Compass Coffee in Boston is a graduate of Union Kitchen's incubator program in DC, and they are actually located next to Union Kitchen's outpost, where they sell a lot of their graduates' product direct to consumer, and that's over in Boston. They make very good sandwiches as well. The limited shared commercial kitchen model offers only the commercial kitchen space. It does not include any of the additional services, as I mentioned previously. There is very little public engagement with this model, so we recommend that this use require a use permit with conditions, which I'll go over, in the commercial and mixed-use districts, and then byright in industrial districts. Then finally, the open-air shared commercial kitchen model offers the same services as the limited model, so it does not include the retail onsite dining or educational incubator facilities, but it is in a mobile unit. So, it looks like a food truck, but it is functionally stationary. There's usually some sort of boot or some sort of place making of some kind. This is an example from the Reef Trucks in Clarendon. Our recommendation, because of the particulars of it being in a mobile unit, would be that it require a use permit in commercial mixed-use and industrial districts. This use was allowed without permitting under the COGO. That's ending in August. Because this is a use that exists in Arlington and supports small business growth, we would like them to have some recourse at that time. This is just an overview of the differences between the three, and I can go back to this slide if needed. These are the more streamlined use standards that reflect what I was just describing. These are also some more streamlined definitions that, again, reflect what I was describing, and I can go back to this slide if you would like as well. And then these are the use permit considerations that we've outlined in the staff report with the goal of providing staff some guidance on the more nuanced potential impacts of these uses that we found in our research that may not have -- that may not come up unless specifically noted in the staff report. And lastly, there was some cleanup that was required in the code. First, establishing a difference between small and large-scale catering. Until this point, there is not an actual definition of either. We found that 8,000 square feet was a fair threshold between small and large-scale catering. We're essentially answering the question, at what point is catering industrial versus a retail-type use? We found that, based on examples in Arlington, small-scale caterers are more -- they lean more into the -- they have onsite dining, they're grocer. That makes them more of a retail-type use, and then large-scale caterers look more like a warehouse, and they are significantly larger than 8,000 square feet. So, 8,000 square feet is large for a small-scale caterer, but it gives them the capacity to also grow into that if they need to. And then we recommend removing the use standards for Restaurant Limited and Restaurant General. These use standards are based on a percentage of food delivery sales. Since we are recommending food delivery be a byright accessory use, these use standards are no longer necessary in order to administer the code. And then the definitions for restaurant drive-through and restaurant fast food only are mentioned in the definitions section of the code, and they reference one another, and they are mentioned nowhere else in the code, and the land use impacts of a drive-through and fast food are mentioned elsewhere in the code. And we are not touching how those are treated elsewhere. We are just getting rid of the definitions that are, we believe as staff, are unnecessary in the definitions section of the code. And that is -- that's it.
Thank you very much. I believe that's the only presentation for this evening. Okay. Do we have any public speakers on this item? Do we have any commissions or other groups wishing to be recognized on this item? Okay. Does ZOCO have a report on this item?
Yes. So, this came before ZOCO on May 9th, and we had very little to opine on it, to be totally honest. I think this is a fairly straightforward action. It's been tested, so to speak, due to the COGO situation, and so we sort of know the -- a lot of the impacts and externalities associated with it. So, the ZOCO Committee was very in support of these changes in adopting this approach to the commercial kitchens. Let's see, on my report, I don't think I had anything else to add. That's it.
Thank you. The matter is with the Commission. I don't know that we need to organize by topics unless you have topics you want to. Okay. So, I will open the floor for any questions amongst commissioners. Okay. Is there a motion that Commissioner Sarley would like to make on behalf of ZOCO?
Yes. Like I said, it's very straightforward. Before I do, I'm just going to put this sort of as a universal sort of request. Do we have to always read the entirety of these motions? Is there a way that we could say, refer to? I don't know who I should look for for this question. Yeah. Anyways, I'll just leave it out there.
For the record, it needs to be heard
Okay.
that you read the entire motion. It's not just for, you know, in the boardroom, but also for those who are joining virtually. So
Okay.
Yeah, as well.
So, I will read the motion.
Thank you. If you need to pause and take water at any point in time, please feel free to do so.
I will do so. Let's see if I have my language correct. "I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board approve the following zoning ordinance changes. A, amend the definition, modify from a primary to an accessory use, and allow establishments of food delivery service in the RA 4.8, R-C-R-A-H-3.2, C-2-M-U-V-S, C-O-1.0, C-O, C-O-1.5, C-O-2.5, C-O, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C-2, CTH, C-3, CR, CP-FBC, CPN-FBC, CM, M1, M2 districts, and to incorporate reference to the aforementioned use in the Arlington County Zone Ordinance Commercial Mixed Use, C District's Accessory Use Table, Industrial, M District's Accessory Use Table, and the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code District Accessory Use Table as set forth herein. And, B, amend and expand the definition of shared commercial kitchens and allow the establishment of the aforementioned use in the RA 4.8, R-C-R-A-H-3.2, C1-M-U-V-S, C-O-1.0, C-O-1.5, C-O-2.5, C-O, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C-2, CTH, C-3, CR, CP-FBC, CPN-FBC, CM, M1, M2 districts, to amend or establish use standards within the retail service and commercial use categories and commercial mixed use standards, and to incorporate references to the aforementioned use in the Arlington County zoning ordinances, retail, service, and commercial use categories. Commercial mixed use, C District's Principal Use Table, Industrial, M District's Principal Use Table, and the Columbia Form-Based Code District Principal Use Table, and C, amend definition of food catering service to food catering establishment large scale and define food catering establishment small scale in the RA 4.8, R-C-R-A-H-3.2, C1-M-U-V-S, C-O-1.0, C-O-1.5, C-O-2.5, C-O, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C-2, CTH, C-3, CR, CP-FBC, CPN-FBC, CM, M1, M2 districts. D, condense and clarify the terms Restaurant Limited, Restaurant General, Restaurants, Drive-Thru, and Restaurants, Fast Food in the RA 4.8, R-C-R-A-H-3.2, C1-M-U-V-S, C-O-1.0, C-O-1.5, C-O-2.5, C-O, COA, CO Roslin, CO Crystal City, C-2, CTH, C-3, CR, CP-FBC, CPN-FBC, CM, M1, M2 districts, amend or remove reference to the aforementioned uses into the Arlington County zoning ordinances, retail, service, and commercial use categories, commercial mixed use standards, commercial mixed use district principal use table, Industrial, M District's Principal Use Table, and the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code District Principal Use Table, and Article 18 definitions as set forth herein. E, make other editorial changes for improved clarity and for other reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general warfare, and good zoning practice." Do I have a second?
Good job.
Second.
I think I want to applaud for that. That was -- that was good. That was good. Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. We have a second on the motions. The motion is before the Commission. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Or to the topic? Great. I'm going to call for the vote. Okay. Commissioner Begley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley? Commissioner Gere?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tellamy?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey? I'm still getting names right.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Striner?
Yeah, that's
Striner? Okay.
Aye.
Great. Commissioner Steinberger votes aye. The motion passes eight to zero.
Can I make a quick note?
We don't have anyone attending virtually, do we, tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. Just long to confirm. Thank you.
I just forgot to thank staff for the great work on this and the ongoing work that they're doing on the market resiliency.
And we'll give you guys a break for a couple of months and not have another one of these, so you don't have to breathe next month as well. So, we'll give you a little bit of breather.
He needs to regain some saliva, so we're just going to wait on that. Thank you. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, please call the next item.
Item number six is S P L A 22 dash 000 dash 18. This is for the Crystal City Towers. We have Courtney Badger, our planning staff, to present this item this evening. And we also have eight speakers on this item, just for the record.
Thank you very much. Staff, when you're ready.
Awesome. Thanks. Give me just one second to share my presentation.
Madam Chair, who seconded the last item?
That was Commissioner Stein -- oh, we had a couple of seconds. I'm going to give it to Commissioner Striner. Commissioner Peterson, is that okay? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Courtney Badger with the Planning Division, and I'm here tonight to give a staff presentation for the Crystal Towers III project. So, this item consists of a site plan amendment and a vacation for a sanitary sewer line, but the sanitary sewer line does not need a PC action, so it will be heard by the county board only. The site is located at 1600 South East Street within the Aurora Highlands neighborhood. This block is currently governed by site plan number 13, which is outlined in white on the screen, and includes the existing Crystal Towers buildings and the Lost 590 building. The proposed buildings will be built on what is currently surface parking lots. The general land use plan designation is high-medium residential and is located within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District. The zoning is RA 4.8, and the applicant is not proposing rezoning at this time. The proposal consists of an 11-story residential building containing 209 residential units with ground floor retail and a single-story retail building just under 20,000 square feet. Both buildings will be participating in the Green Building Incentive Program and certified at LEED Gold Level. They are requesting modifications for additional density, required parking, and density exclusions. In terms of policy guidance, the site is subject to the Crystal City Sector Plan and located in the West Side District. Since the site is located west of Richmond Highway, is not required to include a block plan. The project complies with the recommendations of the sector plan with a deviation related to building height, which I'll talk about in just a second. To try to keep this presentation brief, I'm just going to highlight some of the things that staff focused on in the course of the review of this project, starting first with the building height. The sector plan identifies a building height recommendation for this block of 110 feet, and that is measured from average site elevation to the top floor of the building, not including mechanical equipment. The sector plan also recommends a tapering strategy for the whole of the block that concentrates height along South East Street and tapers moving west to South Fern Street. The RA The RA 4.8 zoning, which governs the site, has a maximum building height of 136 feet, but is measured different than the Sector Plan. It includes the mechanical equipment. The applicant is proposing a residential building height of 132 feet with a taper as it moves west. However, the taper does not follow the Sector Plan recommended taper. Although it's deviating from the Sector Plan, the applicant's proposal is consistent with zoning requirements. Given the infill nature of this project and the compatibility with existing buildings' building heights, staff is supportive of the deviation from the Sector Plan, particularly given that the Sector Plan height guidance is indicative of a full-block redevelopment which the applicant is not proposing. We also looked at the Sector Plan guidance for podium separation. The applicant originally came in proposing a 30-foot podium separation between the proposed residential building and the existing Crystal Flats building. They have since widened that separation and complied with the Sector Plan guidance to widen it to a 40-foot separation. Finally, the Sector Plan had guidance for engaging the recommended Build Two lines. The residential building was originally proposed to have a recess of the ground floor that did not meet the recommendation to have the podium within two feet of the RBL. The applicant has revised the plans to bring that ground-floor facade out to be within two feet of the RBL for the full facade along South East Street. There is still a slight recess of the ground floor, but is in compliance with the Sector Plan recommendations. So here's a rendering of how the project has evolved throughout the SPRC process. You can see on the right, the distance between the podiums is greater, allowing for a more potential for outdoor seating, some landscaped pedestrian connection through the site. It's also a little bit difficult to see between these two renderings, but if you look at this column here, you can kind of see how the facade has been brought out to engage the RBL. With this proposal, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing public access easement on the corner of 15th Street and South East Street. It will be making improvements to that corner space in coordination with staff from DPR. This open space is identified as Open Space Number 18 in the Sector Plan, and calls for the space to contain pathway and trees. The applicant is continuing to work with staff to preserve mature tree canopy in this area and across the site and plant new trees where appropriate. The applicant will provide the following commitments to earn their additional density. This includes contributions to the Affordable Housing Investment Fund and contributions for off-site transportation and public space improvements. The applicant will also be granting a future public access easement for that Open Space Number 18, as well as participating in the Green Building Incentive Program and achieving a LEED Gold certification at the .25 FAR level for both buildings. The review process for this project began in November with an online engagement opportunity and two SPRC meetings. During the SPRC process, we heard general support for the project with concern regarding a lack of mid-block crossing across South East Street, which staff does not support due to concerns about pedestrian safety. We also heard a desire for more pedestrian proximity through the site, which the applicant has responded to by creating a pedestrian connection between that podium separation area between the existing Flats building and the proposed residential building. And finally, there is a discussion regarding the tree canopy and removal of mature trees. The applicant has since increased the number of treats, trees on-site, including street trees, for a total canopy coverage of 24%, which is above the 17.6% that's recommended in the Sector Plan. Overall, the site plan is consistent with the GLUP zoning ordinance and Sector Plan guidance and advances several key county goals and objectives. First, the project will provide a base affordable housing contribution, as well as an additional AHIF contribution, which can be leveraged at the nearby Crystal Houses and help in the creation of approximately 18 committed affordable units for a period of 99 years. The project will provide contributions for off-site transportation improvements in Crystal City and off-site open, public open space improvements in Crystal City as well. The applicant will grant an additional public access easement to increase the size of Open Space Number 18 and make improvements to that space. The project will be built at a LEED Gold certification and also meet the Green Building Incentive Program criteria, including energy star appliances and fixtures, electric vehicle charging, bird-friendly material, facade material. Lastly, the project is in general conformance with the Sector Plan design guidelines in terms of building massing and site design. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of detached ordinance as listed here. That concludes my presentation, and when you get to having questions, I'm happy to answer anything. We also have Joanne Gabour from our Transportation Department to help as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we would now hear from the applicant before we... Do we have the applicant?
They are at Housing Commission right now. I believe...
That's terrible timing.
Somebody was sent to go get them. We will check on that.
Do we have any clarifying... In the interim, do we have any clarifying questions for county staff on their report?
I'll posit a question.
Sure. Commissioner Sarley?
What is a bird-friendly facade material?
Bird-friendly glass.
Okay. Just making sure, because I didn't think brick had a bird problem.
Yeah.
Or, you know.
Getting creative with our words.
Admittedly, but birds usually see the brick when they're flying at it. So, okay, thanks, just...
My dog walks into all sorts of things. There was a question for guests, Mr. Berkey.
I have actually quite a few questions, but I'll start with... I know there's been a lot of questions about this mid-block crossing, and you'd said in passing, staff does not support it for pedestrian safety concerns. Have I heard that right? Can you elaborate?
Clarifying questions?
Oh, clarifying questions.
Clarifying questions.
All right, sorry.
If there's something you didn't understand, a term, or use, otherwise, we're going to wait.
Sarah.
Can we... Yes, do you have a clarifying question?
I don't know if it's a clarifying question.
Okay, ask the question, I'll tell you if it's clarifying.
Okay. You're proposing 18 affordable housing units. Would that include family-sized units?
Is that deemed as a clarifying question?
Let's wait on that. I think we'll hold off. Can we go to public comment to, in the interest of moving forward? Great.
Yeah.
We're going to go slightly out of order. We'll start with our public comment, and if and when the applicant is available to speak with us, we will pause public comment and then probably resume. Thank you for bearing with us on a very unusual evening. This has never happened before, in my knowledge.
Our first speaker will be Corey Jacoby, followed by Nicholas Jacoby.
Hi, I'm here. Should I begin? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Planning Commission tonight. My name is Corey Jacoby, President of the Aurora Highlands Civic Association. The Presidents of Aurora Highlands, Crystal City, and the Arlington Ridge Civic Associations, which make up the Liveability 22202 Coalition, wrote to the Planning Commission on April 18th regarding the Crystal Towers III proposal by Duett Properties. "We urge you to include a mid-block pedestrian crossing on Ead Street as part of this project. This infill development on South Ead Street between 15th and 18th Street will be located across the street from the Crystal Gateway Marriott, which has the only entrance to the Crystal City Underground west of Route 1. Residents of our neighborhoods use this entrance to access the Underground every day, particularly to travel to the Crystal City Metro Station. Currently, there is no mid-block crossing at this intersection, at this location, yet residents consistently cross in between official crosswalks. Anyway, the entrance to the Marriott is approximately 280 feet north of 18th Street and 575 feet south of 15th Street, leaving a significant distance for residents of Crystal Towers and blocks further west, who have to double back to use the official intersection crossing. Adding a mid-block crossing would be aligned with the Crystal City Sector Plan's goal to, quote, 'increase pedestrian connectivity and permeability through some of Crystal City's largest superblocks.' We expect the rate of pedestrians crossing mid-block to increase significantly in the future because of the addition of the 209 units proposed, because of the proposal to bring Route 1 down to grade at 15th and 18th Streets, and because of the significant new retail included in the proposed development. Arlington's Vision Zero Action Plan calls for the mitigation of vehicle speeds and the prioritization of human health above all else in the county's plans and policies. During the second SPRC meeting on April 3rd, county staff flagged that a preliminary analysis did not support a mid-block crossing on Ead Street, but this approach ignores the inevitability of human behavior to travel the shortest paths with the fewest street crossings. People do and will continue to cross at this point on Ead Street regardless of whether there is a crossing installed. It is the county's responsibility to ensure that they can do so safely. We, the Presidents of the three civic associations in the adjacent, in and adjacent to this project, urge you to read the letter we sent for further elaboration on the details of the needed safety feature. Thank you very much."
Thank you. I see that we applicant is now present. We've already called one other public speaker. Let's have that speaker, and then we'll pause public speakers and go to the applicant presentation.
We have three other speakers. Should we just go ahead and finish?
Yes, we're going to finish our public speakers, and then we'll have the applicant present.
Sounds good.
Much better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Jacoby, followed by Pamela Van Heine.
Thanks. Thanks, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, good evening. I'm Nick Jacoby. I've been a resident of Aurora Highlands since 1989. I support the mid-block crossing as well. If Route 1 is in fact brought to grade, which is a real folly, there will be lots and lots of problems crossing, so a mid-block crossing will at least help out. If you'd like a preview for what grade crossings will be like at 15th and 18th Street, I encourage you to cross Route 1 at either 20th or 23rd Streets right now. This superblock is one of the legacies that plagues our neighborhood, and I think the applicant has done a good job in getting a passageway through the site. Unfortunately, the connection between Ead Street and Fern Street was not possible, so if anyone can come up with a way to make that happen, that would be great. The other thing I want to talk about briefly is the parklet at 15th and Ead Street, which I discuss more in my letter to the Board. It's envisioned as a 6,000-square-foot park and plaza, and what comes in is at about 5,000 square feet, and it would be really great if the county could use its convening authority and bring lots, Lofts 590 into the discussion. I would hate to have to revisit this project after all of the construction we've gone through and we're really facing construction fatigue and not have a decent parklet at the corner, and that's the corner right across from Amazon's HQ 2 at Met Park. So it would be really sad if this wasn't done properly just because they weren't invited to the table. So I encourage you to take a look at this and consider it. Otherwise, the applicant has done a great job putting in more trees and making sure that the tree canopy is covered. So I think the SPRC process really worked well on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Van Heine, followed by Bernie Byrne.
You can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good, good. Thank you for providing this opportunity to speak. I am Pam Van Heine, a longtime resident of Aurora Highlands and pedestrian advocate who crosses Eads at 18th almost every day. I'm speaking to you this evening in support of adding a safe mid-block crosswalk across Eads between Crystal Towers and the Marriott Hotel underground entrance. The Liveability Civic Association sent a letter that outlined why adding this crosswalk is so important. I support these comments and recommendations. I followed up with my personal comments, which I will now summarize. Superblocks need access. A key Crystal City Sector Plan goal is to increase pedestrian connectivity and permeability through some of Crystal City's largest superblocks. The Crystal Towers and Marriott blocks are examples of these challenging superblocks. Without a real urban street grid, providing safe pedestrian pathways, passageways through these blocks, and safe and convenient mid-block crossings can improve pedestrian connectivity throughout the neighborhood. Alternatives are dangerous. Proposed alternative locations for pedestrian crossings are at 18th and at 15th. Pedestrians feel that these crossings are dangerous, and in fact, they are dangerous crossings for all users. Both have a significant crash history, including pedestrian crashes, which I documented in my letter. Because our area lacks an adequate connecting seat grid, drivers are forced to make more left and right turns to reach their destinations. These turns put pedestrians at increased risk for crashes. A mid-block crossing is safe. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon light at the ped bike crosswalks on Crystal Drive just north of 18th is working well. Most drivers stop for bike pads, and the RFB, RRFB, and bright painted crossings slow traffic on Crystal Drive. This crossing, a critical convenient connection to key local destinations, both feels safe and is safe. Please ask county staff to evaluate and compare the safety efficacy and impact of a mid-block crossing to the existing crossings at 18th and 15th, and the success of the RRFB on Crystal Drive. The need for this safe crossing will only grow stronger. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bernie Byrne, followed by Eric Castle.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay. The applicant has submitted, this is about landscape plan. The applicant has submitted a conceptual landscape plan that lists species of all trees, terrains, and ground craters. I commend the applicant for this, as most applicants do not provide this. However, there's still a number of deficiencies. The applicant did respond to one of my major concerns, but did not change some of the others. They added common milkweed, which I thank the applicant for doing, and it's a very important plant. I'd rather prefer that. However, there are some other problems. Some of these grasses, some of the plants are not native. I think the blue-eyed grass variety Lusurn, that Lusurn is in Switzerland, and that's where that comes from. That's not native. It can become invasive. Another one is Heliotis salicida, which, Heliotis anyway, which is, it's not native to Northern Virginia. It's native to the Midwest and New York, but not to Virginia. So I wrote the original list, I think that's specific, I can send them another one, but I appreciate that putting the common milkweed in, but there's still more to be done. We really shouldn't be planting these things that are not native, but they can become invasive, and also the pollinating. So that's about all I have to say on this. I should say that the numbers aren't given at this time, that's not really, that's at this point, but there should be predominance of pollinator plants, not grasses. Grasses should be the minority, because grasses don't produce nectar, they don't attract pollinators. Some pollinators feed on the grasses, but much fewer than the insect pollinated plants. So anyway, I thank the applicant for adding common milkweed, but I also have to please go over that list, get rid of the native, the non-natives, and also the cultivars, which often don't feed pollinators, and some of them are really bred for color, they lose all their nectar, producing parts. But there's a lot to say, I please recommend this to the applicant and pass it on to the County Board.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
It's an approved site plan, it's not...
Thank you, Mr. Byrne, your time has expired. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Eric Castle.
Hi, my name is Eric Castle. I'm President of the Crystal City Civic Association, and like Corey and several of the other people, I just wanted to mention that mid-block crossing is really, really important and just can't be ignored. So please consider that. It's a major issue as far as trying to break up these large blocks, and I hope you reconsider staff's recommendation, because we really need adequate crossings for pedestrians in this, in this area. So thank you again. Otherwise, we don't have a ton of comments about this building. We've had some concerns about internal parking and garages and things like that, but overall, a positive report about this building. Thank you very much, and that's all.
Thank you. Do we have any commissions to be recognized? For Joan, for C2E2? Yes, let's do that, and then we'll do the applicant presentation. Any other commissions other than C2E2? You get to go later. Okay, Ms. McIntyre, thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening. For the record, I'm Joan McIntyre, representing the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. As you know, we tend to set a fairly high standard and bar when it comes to evaluating the sustainability, and while the applicant is participating in the GBI program at a .250 FAR, it actually, you know, falls fairly short with what's really required to address climate change and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Using our evaluation methodology, we score this project at about 60%, which is more or less in line with what we've seen in many other projects. Again, we tend to focus very heavy on building electrification, systems that rely on fossil gas, and especially with new buildings, that's going to be locking in the use of fossil fuels for at least a minimum of a decade and probably longer. And the crucial issue with addressing climate change is to cut greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible. This project is calling for use of fossil gas for both the HVAC and the hot water systems. However, I would note that their energy performance analysis actually provides iteration... However, I would note that their energy performance analysis actually provides iterations that would have a path, that would put in all electric, both HVAC and hot water, and we would encourage them to continue to pursue those avenues and to seek out experts in building electrification and decarbonization to see how they can achieve that goal with the construction of this building. For the energy efficiency, 20% is the minimum required of the GBI, but we again encourage at least a minimum of 25% gains over the ashtray baseline. Again, the best way of trying to get to carbon neutrality, or at least a starting point, is to reduce the energy consumption overall, and that would also save money for, for the residents as well, having a highly efficient building. We do encourage applicants, the applicant, to actually look for better opportunities to increase EV charging infrastructure and seek to get about 50% EV parking spaces EV ready so that they can support a transition to electric vehicles. On a more positive note, we do find the planned green roofs as attractive biophilic elements that will help also manage door and motor runoff. The planned 64 kilowatt, kilowatt solar rotation is actually more than the GBI requirement. Would note that there actually is additional space on that adjacent building for additional solar, so would hope the applicant will consider using more solar even though that won't only make probably a small amount of their use. And finally, we commend the applicant of actually repurposing parking space and would hope that they would look for other opportunities in the future to further eliminate excess parking and use that for green space. Again, climate emergency, we need to do things quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all of our public speakers and commissions, other than transportation, wishing to be heard on this matter. We will go out of order now back to the applicant for our presentation, I believe, when you're ready.
Thank you, and apologize, thank you and apologize for having to go out of sequence, so we were next door. My name is Robert Vaughn. I'm with properties, and we're here tonight to talk about our proposal for Crystal Towers 3. A summary of the items that we will be covering, site location, program overview, building renderings, parking, site circulation, streetscapes, tree planting, open space and sustainability. I assume that SAF is oriented due to the site, but the application covers the portion of the Crystal Towers property fronting on South Ead Street. In terms of program, we're proposing to repurpose two existing parking lots, one with an 11-story mixed-use building containing 209 units and 8,000 square feet of ground floor retail, and then a secondary, single-story retail building containing over 19,000 square feet. You can see the conceptual ground floor plan. The mixed-use multifamily building is located on the surface parking lot just to the north of Crystal Flats, and the single-story retail building is located just to the north on an existing surface parking lot closer to the intersection of 15th and Eads. Here's an existing site aerial with the proposed developments generally outlined in red. And here's the proposed site aerial rendering. You can see the 11-story mixed-use multifamily building just north of Crystal Flats, and then the single-story retail building to the north closer to the intersection of 15th and Eads. And we did try to incorporate green roofs wherever we could, as previously mentioned. Here's the rendering from Ead Street. The existing driveway to Crystal Towers essentially remains at the same location, however is fully renovated and improved with larger sidewalks and additional plantings. From an architectural perspective, we tried to make the ground floor very transparent in order to bring the retail activation out onto Ead Street and have separated that from the residential tower above through this architectural brow feature that continues back to the site. The facade on Ead Street is a combination of a porcelain rainscreen with segmented windows, and you can see how that transitions back to a colored metal panel as you get to the interior of the block. So now we have moved into the inside corner of the Crystal Towers North Building. This currently is kind of a large expanse of surface asphalt. Taking that surface asphalt away has allowed us to bring, to push, push out the above-grade planters, and then you can see that architectural brow feature that connects back through and actually engages with the existing canopy, creating what we believe is a very interesting kind of architectural moment at the interior of the block. And then you can also see the facade transition as you move from the porcelain rainscreen back to the colored metal panel, once you get into the more intimate courtyard setting. And this is the location on the south side of the proposed project to the north of Crystal Flats. This was an area that we spent a fair amount of conversation during SPRC, and we have significantly changed this area to create a kind of through pedestrian connection that would allow somebody to walk off of Ead Street, walk around Crystal Flats, back out onto 18th Street. And I would also note that this provides access to the AC grade bicycle parking facility as well as pet spa, while also accommodating extensive outdoor seating. From a, from a parking perspective, the existing Crystal Towers building has 931 parking spaces in a combination between surface parking, parking in a single level below grade beneath Crystal Towers, and parking in the adjacent Lofts 590. In looking back through historic utilization over the past several years, we noticed that a number of these parking spaces were not being used by residents. And that is really the impetus for the site plan that we brought today, to see if we can repurpose those surface parking lots into something that provides both housing and retail to this area of the neighborhood. That utilization has generally hovered around .8, and we made a commitment to our residents that people who have a parking spot today would have a parking spot in the future, maybe just not the specific parking spot that they had, but that translates to 730 spaces required to meet in-place demand. The proposed project does add 42 spaces to that single level of below-grade parking, and we are proposing a .7 blended ratio between both the existing 912 units and the proposed 209 units in the new building. From a circulation standpoint, this is showing the existing circulation, a couple of things that I would highlight. The current single level below-grade garage is accessed off of Ead Street through the surface parking lot, and then has two exit points, one at the north side and one at the south side. In terms of the proposed circulation, we had a concerted effort to try and maintain as many of the circulation paths as we could. The biggest change is that we have consolidated those entry and exit points into a single entry and exit located at the south tower that would come along with a fully renovated and upgraded kind of access control roll-up door entry, along with restriping the interior of that parking, of that parking garage in order to accommodate the new two-way traffic. And you can also see that we have a new pedestrian path that circles around Crystal Flats, providing access if somebody wanted to kind of cut the corner going from Eads to 18th Street. Another benefit that this project provides is a upgrade and modernization of the existing streetscape. You can see on this graphic that the existing sidewalk ranges between kind of eight feet to four and a half feet, and given the mature nature of some of the plants along that sidewalk, the usable sidewalk area is significantly less than that. The proposal completely modernizes the streetscape from 15th all the way down to the sidewalk that was installed with Crystal Flats, really continuing the sidewalk to the north of 15th Street along Eads, providing an eight-foot clear sidewalk, new street trees, light poles, along with a fully protected bike lane. And here's a proposed rendering. This is taken in front of the single-story retail building. In terms of tree, in terms of trees, kind of an unfortunate consequence of the proposal is that we are removing a number of trees. We are currently proposing to remove 80 trees, and you can see that's a combination of four trees removed for poor health, 16 removed because of kind of the location in which they were planted conflicts with the modernized streetscape standards, 32 removed to accommodate the proposed buildings, and then 28 non-native species. We are proposing to plant 107 trees, and while there will be a canopy difference because we are taking out a number of mature trees and planting younger trees, we are going to make a contribution to the Arlington County canopy. In terms of the open space, we are proposing to expand that open space by approximately 700 square feet, and then we are also committed to working with county staff on potential improvements through the final landscape plan review process. From a sustainability perspective, we are, we have positioned the project to meet the requirements of the .25 bonus FAR. That includes LEED gold certification, a minimum of 20% energy performance, bird glass, renewable energy, EV charging infrastructure, and a whole host of other prerequisites. And two I just wanted to highlight is that we have proposed a rooftop solar array on the existing Crystal Towers North Building. So this was proposed at a 65 kilowatt array. This does not limit our ability in any way to potentially expand that array in the future, but this is the commitment that we'd be willing to make along with this project. And then from an EV charging standpoint, we're committing to four EV spaces with 10 additional spaces EV ready. We have done an analysis. We do have additional capacity to expand that EV charging to the extent we see kind of aggregate demand, either from the new building or from existing Crystal Towers. And with that, that's the extent of my presentation, but happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you very much. I will note that you were under time by two whole minutes, and we appreciate that. Great. With that, are there any other commissions? Transportation, I'm looking to you for a report.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. This was heard at the Transportation Commission meeting last week. To cut to the lead, we voted, voted in favor to recommend this project going forward with one amendment to the motion. The discussion involved bicycles, parking, and most of the discussion actually involved the South Ead Street possible crossing. Bike facilities are good here, especially if we're going to be getting improvements on Ead Street. Parking, we did, I guess, raise an eyebrow for the .7, but the explanation from the, from the applicant was that, given that there will be a certain amount of legacy surface parking, if that ratio ends up being high and the tenants simply aren't using the spaces, it can easily be removed because they're simply tear up some asphalt, which is a good result, and one we can all hope will actually happen. So we were, we were comfortable with .7 even though it is so close to a, to a subway station. Most of our discussion, I think, really did involve around South Ead Street. And we also agree with the neighborhood that, given the super block here and the distance between 15th and 18th Street, that a mid-block crossing somewhere in some way is desirable. We had a fairly long colloquy with DES, Ms. Gabor, who I will be asking later to sort of repeat that, to go through what DES is thinking and why that resulted in the motion that the Transportation Commission did in fact make. Transportation Commission did recommend that approximately $500,000 that is already being dedicated to transportation, off-site transportation improvements, be used to analyze that entire block between 15th and 18th Street on Ead Street to find a way to actually just reconfigure that street so it'll be better for all the users. That's drivers, pedestrians, bicycles, trucks coming through, you know, just, just, we all recognize that Ead Street is evolving. It has gone from more of a raceway to a very urban environment. Remember, the Met Park is just a block away. With the added retail on this side, there are now destinations. It isn't just as simply a street to pass through. And because the character is changing so much, an approach, the Transportation Commission very much feels that an overall rethinking of Ead Street between those two streets is in order. So I will also be making a motion to that effect to have us match Transportation Commission's motion later on, if we move ahead on that. Anyway, that's the report for the Transportation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There were sort of two SPRC chairs for this item, one being James Schroll, who has recently left the commission. His term expired, that was all, and then very capably carried forward by Commissioner Guerin. So Commissioner Guerin, can we please have a report?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Ms. Badger gave a very nice summary, and there's an excellent staff report of this process and this proposal online, which is referenced in my own report. You can see that for more information, but essentially, this proposal is a request for constructing two new buildings, essentially infill in an area that's already well-served by public transit. Two new buildings, one residential with retail and one retail, so adding some retail to primarily residential area. The applicant is proposing to participate in a number of, essentially, community benefits, the sort of things that we ask of our typical developers, but they're going for a LEED gold certificate for the two buildings, the $500,000 contribution in off-site transportation improvements, $425,000 for off-site public space improvements, and then the base affordable housing contribution and $1.4 million for the AFR fund. And so all of this is also laid out in the staff report. So while the site is within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District, the applicant was not requesting the rezoning to CO Crystal City. However, the proposal was still evaluated for conformance with the guidance in the sector plan regarding height, land use density and design, also with the GLUP, with the zoning ordinance, and there are a few requested modifications. These were discussed throughout the SPRC process, and they are not, no, they're not outstanding. That's the reduction in the overall parking, and as we just heard, Transportation Commission also discussed that. The proposed density above the base and the density exclusions for the typical below-grade mechanical and so on. So in terms of our process, we had the online engagement, a site tour, and then two SPRC meetings. And the sort of things that were of interest to the community and the participating commissions were the proposed building height, again, resolved, the podium separation, again, resolved, the loss of mature tree canopy, but it's our understanding that the applicant is working to add as many trees as they can to the site. There's a desire to also add some other vegetation on the site to offset that loss. And the biggest issue was generally this idea for a pedestrian connection through the block, and then what came out of that as well was this idea of the mid-block crossing. And so these are superblocks. When this area was developed, we did not have these issues. It was very auto-oriented. Ideally, the block would be developed as a whole, but that's not going to happen because it's wonderful that we're repurposing the buildings, that we're adding building on surface lots, but that means that this vision for breaking up the superblock to make for pedestrian connectivity is not something that's going to be easily achieved. So the possible topics for discussion, and I'm adding to what I put in my report that went on to all of you, so the biggest one for me was how do we balance the benefits of something like this where we're retaining the existing building, we're adding residential, much-needed residential right in this area, and still address the issue of superblock porosity, getting pedestrians through it, recognizing that we have had this conversation through the SPRCs. So this mid-block crossing, as you've heard, is a very big concern for the community. It's a safety concern. People are already crossing there. So I would like to spend some time on that and hear what my colleagues think about this, and also, again, from Ms. Gabor, since I know she's continuing to work on this and she's hearing this over and over. And then the other issues that I would like to add for discussion, Madam Chair, given the comments that we've heard, including what I've heard from my colleagues in terms of other proposed motions, are housing, affordable housing and the unit makeup, tree canopy, native plants, biophilia, energy, electric opportunities for HVAC, the hot water, more EV, potentially more solar, elimination of the parking in the long term, what that looks like, the park sizing and any discussion that you've had with the lofts. And then I know I have the main motion, and I believe there are two other motions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Guerin. I did not take notes on that list of topics, so we'll have to use the list that you have. To the voluminous list of topics that Commissioner Guerin went through, does anyone have any topics to add? Commissioner Peterson?
I just wanted to ask a question about the green ribbon, and I think that could be part of like a transportation. Thank you.
Okay. Any other topics to add explicitly? Oh, yes. Commissioner Triner?
Was parking in there in the garage, was that one of those topics?
Yes, parking was in there.
Never mind. I'll put that on there.
That was a long list.
Very long list.
I believe the first topic, if I remember correctly, was discussion of weighing the...
Let's do the easy ones. Do housing first.
Okay, we're going to start with housing. Anyone would like to speak on the topic of housing? You mean affordable housing?
I can start us off.
Yes, some other...
Okay.
Sure.
Commissioner Berkey?
But I'll defer to some of my colleagues. So, okay, so I have a couple of questions about the proposal here. And so just so we're, everybody is on the same page here, and most of you all know this, but maybe some folks don't. So we have the base contribution, we then have the density, and my understanding is typically, whereas the developer applicant has discretion with the base, the county has discretion with regards to density, affordable housing contribution, typically, the county has pursued onsite affordable units, but... But basically, here, the county can choose to allow the applicant to propose an affordable housing plan. And so here, the, what is it, $1.4 million, I believe, contribution to AHIF is what is being proposed versus the onsite units. So my question is, for the 18 possible onsite units at Crystal Houses, are those 18 additional onsite units at Crystal Houses? Because my understanding is that project is about 556 affordable units. So is it on top of that, or is it inclusive of what's already being contemplated?
Yeah, so to clarify, thank you. The community benefits package includes approximately $1.4 million for the AHIF. That would be money that we could leverage towards units at Crystal Houses. So it would not be additional on top of what has been approved, but would help kind of fill the gap budget-wise. And just to also add to that, a couple of things to note for Crystal Houses. The term for affordable housing at Crystal Houses would be a 99-year term as opposed to the 30-year term that is typical with site plan projects and that we would see with an onsite affordable housing through the site plan process. Additionally, Crystal Houses is across the street from the site, and it was, just as a fun fact, a part of Site Plan Number 13 up until 2019, when it was taken out of the site plan that we're talking about. So it is very related in close proximity to the subject site.
Right. But it's no net additional units. It's really, the choice that we're making is to accept the AHIF contribution and get no new net committed affordable units at this time. Is that right?
Yeah. The community benefits package that has been negotiated includes the $1.4 million that could be leveraged at the Crystal Houses site.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
So I think what Commissioner Berkey is trying to say is that those units are going to be built regardless, and the county would find money for those units anyway. And so if we approved onsite units, that would be six extra units, since we'll figure out how to get the money when the affordable housing units are built, you know, in the future.
So I don't know if I can speak to county budgeting. I'm going to look to Matt Pfeifer to see if he has any additional knowledge.
Thanks, Courtney. Matt Pfeifer with the Planning Division, for the record. Commissioner Peterson, I think the bottom line here is that we would have to find the funding at some point, and here is the funding that we're getting. And so, again, you know, similar to the way that you guys approached, you know, recommending this scheme with the Americana Hotel site, you know, this is right in the backyard. So in effect, you know, we view this as practically onsite. It's not onsite, but it is so close that, for all intents and purposes, it is. And it comes out to about 18 units. And as you mentioned, we would have to find the funding, so here it is.
Can I ask a follow-up? Sarah? Can I have a follow-up? Has the county board given any guidance to you that you need to find the funding for this project, or, you know, could it be that they'll just assign some one-time funding if we have a good, you know, if we don't hit a recession in the future?
I think that's yet to be determined, but that's something we can go back to Housing Staff and discuss and get back to you on.
Commissioner Alton?
Yeah. As you know, I was the chair for the SPRCs for Crystal Houses, and we approved, that site plan now has a substantial number of additional units that can be built as infill. Is that partly what we're talking about? This money would go toward building out those approved units rather than simply converting the existing building?
That's right. These are, we're talking about the development of the approved Crystal Houses three through eight, which, just the background on that, as we know, Amazon gifted the site to Washington Housing Conservancy. The county then worked with them to find a development partner, which now has been found. And we will be reviewing, I think there will be submissions for some minor site plan amendments to begin the implementation of that project.
Okay, so that site has existing units and it has theoretical units?
Correct.
And what we're talking about here is these contributions going toward the theoretical units?
Correct.
Okay. And as you mentioned, we did approve that for the Americana. That's the same concept, that they're going to go to those...
Exactly the same.
Theoretical units. And yes, they're right in the neighborhood, which is something we've been asking for for quite a long time, for contributions. Will it be in that same neighborhood? Okay, that's what I, I wanted that clarification, because I was, despite the questions from my fellow commissioners, I was still a bit confused. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
I will recognize myself. In terms of, for many projects, we've emphasized, myself and several commissioners, emphasize the need for onsite affordable housing units and really a preference towards moving the commission in that direction, kind of as a standard practice. In this instance, again, given the extremely close proximity to where these affordable units will be built in an existing plan, I am more than satisfied with that. And while I understand that funding might be found elsewhere, I think that funding is never guaranteed, and this is a good way to move forward with the funding that is needed for this project. So I will be supporting the cash contribution towards affordable housing as recommended by the staff report at this time. If such a motion to have the units be onsite were made, I believe I would vote no on that, should anyone care.
Yeah, I think, so I think my concern stems from the fact that this is really about, it's about AHIF, being candid, this is about AHIF. The county has done a lot in the last few years, and it's in the staff report. You know, we've got the $150 million line of credit for Barcraft Apartments. There's a lot of other commitments. Crystal Houses, I believe, there's an anticipated, I think, $53 million AHIF request, which is the largest AHIF request in the history of the program by far. It's a massive one. So I'm definitely sympathetic to that, but, you know, we would just basically be choosing the money, and it would be six less onsite units. That's my kind of big concern there. Housing Staff also did an analysis earlier this spring that they presented, actually, at the Housing Commission, where they presented that while, yes, the AHIF funds can be leveraged, I think what it is, up to three times more, you know, to get three times more units essentially, right, than you're going to get onsite, the value of the contribution compared to the onsite units, the onsite units are actually grossly under, we're getting much less of the contributions in the long run, that those onsite units are essentially worth at least two to two and a half times more over the long run, basically. So in the short term, you know, with AHIF, the leveraging, we get bang for the buck. But the long term, you know, maybe we reopen the ordinance at some point. We're not doing that tonight, but there actually is tremendous value in having these onsite units. And so that's why I'm being kind of a pain about it, because we don't really get that many opportunities to get these onsite units, even if they are across the street, because I don't think it's necessarily a choice. I think it's, do we choose to get these units or not? How much AHIF is funded on a year-to-year basis is really dependent. This year, we had a proposal that it be funded at about, I think it was eight million, and now it's funded at 20. So that fluctuates as well. So I will conclude there. That's sort of the perspective that I'm bringing.
Thank you. I'd like to keep us moving, so, real quick, but we're going to the next topic. Commissioner Triner?
It's real quick, yeah. So 18 units would be in Crystal House, but if we were to commit units in Crystal Towers, how many would we get? This may have been asked already.
It would be about either five or six units.
Five or six, okay. Thank you.
That was real quick. I appreciate it. Next topic.
My word.
The next topic was tree canopy, nature.
Does that cover open space, too?
That would cover open space, the park.
Commissioner Badger?
Following up on Dr. Burns' comments about the milkweed and that there's not a plan yet, it is a little frustrating sometimes, sitting up here and hearing that, yes, we're going to have this or that, but we never get a plan to look at. So my question to you is, will you really look hard to see if you can incorporate some kind of milkweed there? I would appreciate that, yes. The butterflies would appreciate that.
Yes. I believe that we have plans to incorporate milkweed.
Okay.
And we've, I think, gone through a couple of iterations of Dr. Burns' comments and incorporated them into the plan, to the extent we can.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alton?
The green roof over the retail, that is, is that going to be open to the public, or is that a green roof that's just to be green space?
That is, that is just a green roof.
That's fine.
That is not accessible.
No concern about that. That's good. The corner park, what is going to be the process for determining the final design for that?
That will be done through the final landscape plan. So it'll be reviewed by staff. They submitted some concept designs. Staff is working with them, and it'll be approved for the final landscape design, the final landscape plan.
Will DPR be working to program that, or is that the applicant who does that, or who owns that space, and then who controls it?
So it's, there's dual ownership. It's partly owned by DWEK, the applicant, it's also partly owned by the Lofts 590. There will be a public access easement over it. It's not called to be a programmed space. The sector plan really wants it to be a pathway with trees, is kind of the exact language of the sector plan. And so they've been working, the applicant has been working with DPR staff to incorporate that vision of just kind of a relaxed pathway with trees for that space. So that's the kind of design that they're going with and will be approved administratively through the final landscape plan.
Okay. I mean, personally, I'm happy with that, but I want to make sure that the neighborhood, who's been watching this like a hawk, will be consulted and understands what's happening and will be able to weigh in on that before it is finally approved.
So it would be done administratively. So it would not be, like, you know, a lot of times with DPR, they'll have an online engagement, and that will not be the process for this. The design that comes out of it will be very similar to what is there today.
Okay. What I would, I would hope that you would have at least some outreach to the neighborhood to say, this is what we're contemplating, to give them at least an opportunity to weigh in on it.
I'll pass that along to...
Even if you don't have a formal process.
Yeah, we'll pass that along to DPR and suggest that to them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Guerin?
Well, first, Commissioner Peterson, did you want to talk about green ribbon at this point? Excellent. Okay. Yeah, then I did want to follow up also on Commissioner Bagley's and Mr. Burns' comments. I would encourage you, even if it's not on our do-not-plant list, to avoid cultivars, because we update that list all the time, and you do not want to have to be responsible to pull something out and put it back in once it's mature. So, and then just, I think, Mr. Pfeifer, you can confirm this. Any planting plan is reviewed by our urban forester to make sure that we don't have anything that is actually invasive in it.
Absolutely, yeah.
If Mr. Burns is still listening, those native grasses don't provide nectar, it's true, but they do provide seeds to migrating birds, so there is some benefit to those. The last question I had on this, and this was raised by one of the community members, have you had any outreach with the Lofts 590, given that it is dual ownership?
Yes, we've had conversations with Lofts about the original concept plan. I would say they are kind of generally supportive. We do have a process that we will need to go and work with them to get whatever the final decided plan that is worked out with staff. We're going to have to do a landscape amendment to their plan, given that half of the open space falls on their property. But we have indicated to them that we will manage all of that, we'll pay for all of that. But they are, to date, very cooperative in terms of re-envisioning that space.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Next topic?
Was energy and a lot of the issues raised by our representative from C2E2, including the potential to add more EV spaces, to add more solar, to move towards electric HVAC and hot water, to eliminate parking in the long term, if there's an opportunity for that, and add more green space. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or thoughts on that? Thanks.
Commissioner Triner?
Sure. Yeah, so, I mean, I saw in the presentation that there was the proposal to put solar panels on the roof of the North Tower. Was there any reason why not to put that on the South Tower as well?
So I think we identified the size of the array that we wanted to program. The North Tower, just given the existing infrastructure, is a better candidate for solar, given that the South Tower has additional equipment in terms of antennas that would need to be relocated. So we have been working with the solar developer in understanding how that installation process would work. So we have kind of made a commitment to install the 65 kilowatt array. This in no way limits our ability to install additional solar. It would likely be located on the North Tower at some point in the future, but this is the size of the array that we would be committing to as this project.
Gotcha. So it's just really not viable on the South Tower, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying it's not, anything is viable.
Sure.
But we have a fair amount of rooftop space that we could use. The North Tower is a better candidate for solar than the South Tower.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Alton?
Yeah, this is about the EVs. It just strikes me that you might be underestimating the need for EV spaces. Your building will be attracting the type of tenants that will probably be more amenable to EVs, especially going forward, than the average demographic. I don't want to have a situation where you end up having more tenants wanting EVs than space, and then you end up putting it in the surface lots, because they're actually pretty easy to just dig it up and run a conduit and pop up the charging, you know, the chargers. And that we can't get rid of those, because that's where all the EVs are. If you can find a way to, even if you don't wire it now, at least have it conduit-ready and have transformer space figured out, presumably, if you don't need as much parking, some of that could be transformer space. So, you know, that could work. But if you have at least some plan for expanding in the coming years, I think that would be prudent for you, just for your marketing. But we also think it'd be the right way to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Sarley, would you like to recognize?
I would strongly encourage the applicant to consider the electrification, so just to highlight that. If you can't do both the mechanical and the water, at least do the water. There's heat pumps, there's a lot of, you know, I think, technology, it's an evolving thing, but absolutely, you know, do take a second look at that. I think that's a big, big emphasis that I'd like to place on. Thank you.
Topic on our list?
Was the parking in the garage?
Would anyone like to be recognized on parking in garage? Commissioner Triner?
Yeah, so I noticed in the presentation that, in the current flow, that there are two entrances, or there's one entrance to the garage and two exits, but the new plan only has one exit. Do you think that would cause any sort of logistical issues for people coming in and out of the lots?
So this is a topic that we've looked at extensively with our traffic engineer, and we believe that by restriping and reconfiguring some of the spaces on the interior, we have an easy pathway to accommodate that two-way traffic for that south, both entry-exit point.
Okay. And I also want to note, I live in the area, so I see that, I want to confirm that what you're saying of all the, a lot of the empty spots on the lot has is, that is true. There are a lot of empty spots on that lot, so I think the sort of increased density and decreased parking requirements are justified here.
Okay. Thank you. Who else would like to be recognized on parking in garage? Commissioner Guerin? Nope? Okay. Next topic.
This would be the design of the single-story building. Commissioner Sarley?
So, in short, I'm asking, why is that only one story? You know, are we capped out on our density? Is that why we're doing this? It just, and the only thinking there is, you know, you're taking up the footprint, we're taking away trees and open space, so why not go like two or three stories?
So I'm going to play zoning attorney here, and I might go far afield, but maintaining the R4.8 zoning allows us for single-story commercial. So that would potentially prohibit us expanding multiple stories. You also, with the Crystal City Sector Plan, you would run into dimensional challenges maintaining the podium separations and tower separations that you would need to comply with if you were to elevate that to multiple stories. So it's a much tighter area than you have in the southern parking lot, where we proposed the 11-story building. It is something that we did originally look at, but we didn't think was viable without significantly impacting the existing Crystal Towers North building.
And I guess that's a little frustrating, you know, not so much of anything you did, but just that the guidelines ended up sort of pushing us into that corner, because I do think that that's a little bit of a missed opportunity there. And, I don't know, I guess I just would love to see a little bit more density on that area, you know. I guess I just would love to see a little bit more density on that area, you know. And we're talking about housing units and we're talking about, you know, having something that could be really not negatively impacting in that area, you know, considering that there is that massive structure behind it already. So that's unfortunate, I guess. If there's anything that you come up with, you know, your design team can think of. I know it's late in the game, but I would encourage you to look at that. Thank you.
Next is what I think is our last topic, transportation, including the green ribbon and the mid-block crossing.
Okay. Let's take the...
Could we ask Ms. Gabor to explain to us DES's position on the mid-block to help with the discussion? Okay.
I would like to take those two separate topics. I'd like to talk about the green ribbon first and then the mid-block crossing.
So put a pin in that. Commissioner Peterson, you're up.
Thank you. This is a question for staff. In looking at the Pentagon City Plan, the proposed green ribbon, the green ribbon potential extension went all the way down 15th Street South. And then there was a green ribbon preferred placement that kind of touched on to 18th Street South. So is there a reason that kind of developing this green ribbon wasn't part of this plan?
I will need a minute to catch up. So this site is located within the Crystal City Sector Plan. So it wasn't reviewed for the Pentagon City Sector Plan guidelines.
Yeah.
So that's the main reason. And I'm slightly unfamiliar with the green ribbon, so I can't comment on that as extensively, but we can get a response back to you.
Okay.
After the meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Because I'm looking at the map, that is part of the Pentagon City Plan, and it does include this particular block in the map. So I don't know why they did that, since it's, you know, the Pentagon City Plan, but it is part of that map for that plan.
I think that assumed that the block would totally redevelop and the towers would go down. It was, would be part of breaking up, breaking up a super block.
Yeah.
But that's not happening.
Well, but you can still execute the plan that's pictured here with keeping the super block. Because it just has, you know, it runs right along 15th Street here and then kind of starts into 18th Street. So you could maintain the super block and execute this part of the plan.
Oh, that little bit there.
Yeah.
I see what you mean. But that's, that's along the Lofts.
Mm-hmm.
That's already built. That's not part of this site plan.
Okay. But what, okay. That's my only question. We don't have an answer tonight, so thank you.
Are we able to get, oh, sorry, did you have a response now? Or, oh, great, let's hear it. That's what I want. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Gabor with DES for the record. So looking at the map, I believe you're looking at, it's page 43 in the PDF. I'm not actually sure what figure number this is. It's just before 1.1. So this is an illustrative that we do have. And as Commissioner Lantelme was mentioning, that portion of the green ribbon along 15th Street South between Fern and Eads is along the Lofts frontage, which is outside of the property that we're looking at. As you'll see, there is no green ribbon shown along the Ead Street frontage, which is where this project fronts, which is why that's not something that we looked at in this case. And additionally, I think something, again, I think Commissioner Lantelme mentioned, and Ms. Badger mentioned, was this is outside of the area that we are looking at for the limits for the Pentagon City Plan. It's something where we kind of show the edges to show how it could transition to the other areas outside of that area.
I appreciate the comprehensive response. Thank you. Anything else on green ribbon? Then we're going to roll into mid-block crossing. Commissioner Lantelme?
Yes, and I would ask Commissioner, Ms. Gabor, to go over, pretty much repeat, the explanation you gave the Transportation Commission as to that entire block and the concerns, that the factors that would have to be considered in order to enable a mid-block crossing to occur.
Can you pull those couple of slides up for me? As Commissioner Lantelme mentioned, we did have a robust discussion about this at Transportation Commission. We have a couple of slides we're going to pull up that, I like to see pictures, I like to see graphics, I think it helps everyone. That'll show what we're talking about. We're going to start with an existing conditions presentation. So this is existing conditions. Are we showing it? I'll have to look over your shoulder. So what you're looking at is Ead Street in the east-west direction. On the right side is 15th Street. I don't know, are they, are you able to see this?
Yeah.
Okay. So while we're waiting for this to be resolved, I can talk a little bit about generally where staff is. And one of the things that we do feel pretty strongly about is this isn't something that should be tagged on to this specific project. It's something that we do feel needs to be looked at from a county perspective and an Ead Street corridor perspective. When we look at Ead Street, you know, sort of going from north to south, the first block, we have Army-Navy Drive to 12th Street, which we do with the Penn Place frontage that will be changed. We also have a county project on the east side that's going to have some impacts to that will upgrade the bicycle facilities. The block just north of here, from 12th to 15th, again, we have Met Park Development, which is almost finished on the west side, is making a lot of improvements. We also have a county project on the east side that's making significant improvements. This block, the 15th to 18th block, again, this project is making improvements on the west side. We do not have a county project to make improvements to the east side at this time. And then with the Crystal Houses to the south of this, from 18 to 23rd, 18 to, yeah, 18 to 23rd, they are looking at making improvements on the west side. And then there is no county project at this point on the east side. And what we are seeing is, we are seeing a lot of changes to this corridor in terms of the uses and the volumes of traffic that we see, and also the modes of traffic that we see individuals using. So typically, you think 40, 50 years ago, you had a lot more vehicles. Now we are seeing a lot more bicyclists, we're seeing a lot more pedestrians, and we are seeing a lot more transit activity. And so we want to make sure that we are looking at Ead Street holistically, and that's where it's looking at it all the way from Army-Navy Drive down to 23rd Street, and see what makes sense from a modal perspective and a crossings perspective. In addition, we also want to look at where are the developments coming and what is being included with those developments in terms of crossings. And we want to make sure that if we do include additional crossings, that they are going to be safe for all users, especially our most vulnerable. And so that's kind of the jumping off point, if you will, of these slides we're now going to look at. So what this is showing you in the existing condition, Ead Street, 15th Street is on the right, 18th Street is on the left. Everything you see here in the red trapezoid is an existing entrance. And so the two on the east side, so on the bottom, if you will, in this image, that are close together, those are at the Marriott property. The one to the right of that are closer to 15th Street, that is a loading entrance and exit for that existing property. On the north side, on this piece of paper, the west side in reality, we have the three Crystal Towers entrances. So when we go to the next slide, did I go the right way? Thank you. So this is the proposed conditions, and I have added some dimensions here. So what you will see is the east side, so the bottom portion on this sheet remains the same. On the north side, that one entrance is being removed with this project. But the big thing to note here is mid-block, again, where that Marriott crossing is, we only have about 50 feet between the two entrances for the Marriott property. And so those entrances actually do provide entry and exit options, and options to turn either north or southbound on Ead Street. And then on the west side, so the Crystal Towers side, we have about 110 feet between those two entrances, which again, they are both entry and exits, and provide the ability to turn both north and southbound. And so that is approximately mid-block. As you can see, the block's about 830 feet long. That would be the location, again, about mid-block numerically. But putting a pedestrian crossing right where you have four-vehicle entry-exit points with the option to turn in all directions, ends up with a lot of conflict points, and that's something that staff does not want to encourage. You know, providing something, then looking further to the north, when again, I look on the Marriott side, we only have about 115 feet between the entry and the loading entry and exit portion, which again, is very close together. And then looking further north, you're basically at the crossing of 15th Street. You're looking to the south, you know, if you put something, you know, maybe 150 feet up, again, it doesn't provide a lot of benefit, if you will, and it also ends up with a crossing very close to an intersection, which is also a challenge. Because we don't like, we want to make sure intersections aren't too close together. So you would end up with a potential issue of vehicles passing the intersection of 15th or 18th Street, and then all of a sudden coming across a crossing, which is not something that you expect, which again, potentially is another safety issue. So that's a lot of the reason. Basically, from a safety perspective, we don't support the mid-block crossing here. The other ancillary reason is also, you know, if we did do some crossing here, we would be losing some parking. But again, that's something from a county perspective, we would need to evaluate on a corridor basis. And the other thing I will just note is also with the Marriott property, while there is access to the underground, I don't believe we have any actual public easements for individuals to go from that sidewalk to that underground. So that's something that would need to be investigated. Because again, having something that encourages individuals, then you need to talk to the property owner to understand the ramifications of that from a legal perspective. I think that summarizes where we were.
Thank you. And I can summarize a little bit of transportation, where we, this is, as you know, you know, that's 830 feet from 15th to 18th. This is a super block. It's effectively three standard blocks for that neighborhood. Two streets are missing in the middle of this. So it ends up being a very, very long walk. And it's also a very, very wide street. We have a turn lane in the middle, parking on both sides, so it's a very wide street. People nonetheless, as the neighborhoods are saying, people are crossing. And that's a safety issue too. Because even though they're not supposed to, they're going to do it anyway. So when we've had the back and forth with DES, we, Transportation Commission very, very strongly agrees with the neighborhood and feels that it is appropriate, that some way we need to find a way to have a mid-block crossing here. We fully recognize all the concerns that DES has raised, and they're very real. Which means that we do have to do a holistic review of these streets and decide, how do we balance the needs of the motorists, the neighborhood, neighborhood people walking, and bicycles in order that it is maximum safety, but at the same time goes with what people want to do and where people want to go, acknowledging the very rapid changes of the character of this entire street. Which is why we made the motion, we made the motion, and it was passed unanimously, to do a holistic study of this entire block in order to figure out, how can we accommodate a mid-block crossing? And this is probably something that could very well be applicable to the other superblocks on Eads, going by, as you mentioned, it's all from Army-Navy all the way to the south. I think even at the, at Penn Place, there will be mid-block crossings which are being created as part of those street, those projects.
That's correct.
So we have that happening, you know, and we're able to, fortunately, we had, we're scraping the site, so it makes it a bit easier. But here, we do have other owners that have to be negotiated with or talked to and determine what's going on. But that said, I will be making a motion, because I also feel strongly that we have to find a way to safely make a mid-block crossing here that accommodates all users. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. Would anyone else?
I can do it.
Would anyone else like to be recognized on the topic of the mid-block crossing? Commissioner Striner, and then Commissioner Sarley.
Oh, you can go first if you want.
Okay. Commissioner Sarley, then Commissioner Striner.
Yes, we're caught between a rock and a hard place here. I don't, I totally agree with staff's assessment of the situation. But then, as Commissioner Lantelme mentioned, and I will associate myself with his comments, people will be crossing that street, right? So what do we do about that, is I think where we're at. Thank you.
Commissioner Striner?
Yeah. So, again, I mentioned, I lived in the area, so, and someone who took the Crystal City Metro to get here tonight, I can attest that there are people crossing constantly. And it's a situation that is likely going to get worse, particularly if we have another large, high-rise building coming into the area. Additionally, on 15th Street, there actually is another mid-block crossing being put into place that's, that connects Loft 590 and where HQ2 is going to be. So it's a very sort of similar situation on 15th, where there's a long gap between Fern and Eads, that midpoint is being covered by that sort of mid-block crossing. And in the same way, I think a mid-block crossing here between 18th and 15th on Eads makes a lot of sense for that, in that, for the same reasons. Additionally, it's probably going to be good for business. You have people coming out of the Crystal City Metro, and it's, if they had a mid-block crossing crosswalk that they could take to get to either the ones, the first-story retail on where, closer to where the open space is going to be, or closer to the Crystal Flats location. It's something that would just make a lot of sense for them. It would probably be better for the businesses that they would have more foot traffic coming that way. So for that reason, I would support my colleague's amendment to add in a mid-block crossing here. It just seems like, to make it a more complete street, it would be something that we should put into this plan.
Thank you. I believe that wraps up the topics we had. Unless there's any kind of final thoughts people want to make at this time, we're going to move towards motions. And I will look to Commissioner, oop, yes, Commissioner Sarley.
Yeah. Oh, I'll share a final thought. First of all, I'd like to commend staff and the applicant. This is a great project, and I will grind my axe a little bit and say thank you for preserving the structure and building around it and showing how we can, notwithstanding the little unfortunate density conversation that we had earlier on. But I really do appreciate, you know, the applicant's approach to this project and making something that preserves the building, which has huge environmental impact, everything else aside, right? It doesn't matter what platinum, double-platinum setting you have, if you tear down a building, you're always going to be trying to play catch-up. So keeping the building is just massive, you know? And E2C2 is here, and they can hopefully back me up on that. So, thank you. And the design, you know, is good, and I think notwithstanding some of the typical conversations that we have, this project has, is going to be a great addition to the community. So thank you.
Commissioner Lantelme?
Yeah, I just want to do a final thing. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Geren and Commissioner Schroll, for doing a very good conspiracy on this. I thought it worked out really well. We made tremendous improvements over the process, so, and I think it's a very good project. I want to note that even though there are a number of deviations from the sector plan for this, the deviations are such that they are completely consistent with what this county wants to do in its metro corridors, it's more urban areas. If we're going to do height, this is a great place to do it. If we're going to do density, it's a great place to do it. And at the cost of not being able to fully break up a super block, I think it's well worth doing that. I think that even though we, even though we don't follow the letter of the sector plan, we are more than following the spirit of what we're trying to do with this sector plan by having this project. So I am very, very comfortable in going ahead, recommending, and voting in favor of it occurring. That said, I will be also pushing for the mid-block crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll look to Commissioner Geren for a motion now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. But I also want to thank our excellent staff, who does very good work at hearing what the community is saying and trying to get everything to conform to so many, you know, spinning plates and the applicant. Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. With that, I will start with the main motion. I move the Planning Commission recommend the County Board adopt the attached site plan amendment ordinance for SPLA 22-00018, Site Plan Amendment to SP number 13, to permit the construction of up to 205,101 square feet of residential gross floor area, 209 residential units, and approximately 28,076 square feet retail gross floor area with modifications of zoning standards for additional density, reduced residential and retail parking ratios, density exclusions, and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed development subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Sarley, seconds. Would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Geren?
No, I think we've done that. Thanks.
Okay. What's the best one? What's the best way to do it?
Your call.
And then the motion, oh, I get to call, decide?
I can, we can.
Why don't we vote on the motion before us, and then we will do related motions afterwards? No? I'm getting faces. That's what we did last night for Career Center. Hey, Mr. Pfeiffer, how would you like us to do this?
In this case, you may want to make any motions and amendment to the main motion.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have an amendment that I'd like to make.
Let's hear it.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend that county staff continue to work to find a way to achieve a mid-block pedestrian crossing of South Ead Street between 15th and 18th Streets South. And if that is not achievable with this project, that the county dedicate the $500,000 off-site transportation contribution from this site plan to a future near-term capital project on South Ead Street between 15th and 18th Streets South that could provide a safe mid-block crossing as well as improve the northbound bicycle facilities.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Steinberger.
I've already spoken to the motion at length, so I don't think I need to add anything further.
Vote on the amendment to the main motion now. Commissioner Begley.
Aye.
Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantelme.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Striner.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Motion carries, the amendment, the motion to amend the motion carries 8-0. Thank you very much. Are there any other motions to amend the main motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Yes, recognizing Commissioner Burkey.
So, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the County Board only consider onsite units at Crystal Towers to satisfy the applicant's affordable housing contribution under the Crystal City Sector Plan in exchange for the requested bonus density.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Peterson, seconds. Thank you. I believe we've spoken to this already. Anything else we need to say on this motion before we vote?
I'll just say, I do believe that the County Board would find the money to fund this project without this extra contribution to AHIF. So, I think that the, we would get these 18 units anyway, so the extra four to six.
Yeah, I mean, I have several concerns, one of which is, you know, I don't, I don't think it's the intent, but I don't want to see us creating policy with regards to onsite units and site plans like this. I don't think that's the intent, but it kind of, it reads that way a little bit, because I think that is, you know, that there's a conversation there to be had about onsite units versus contributions to AHIF from developers. It's a spirited conversation, and so, I'd rather us not have that here and stick to kind of what we've done, which is both getting, you know, the five to six units onsite here, and then finding other sources for the AHIF throughout regular budget cycles.
In this instance, I will be voting against this. I very much do support onsite. And we have been voting as a body quite consistently for onsite and asking for it. And I think this doesn't really set a precedent. It's simply an exception from our regular practice. And I think that, given that it is in the neighborhood, it's almost on the site, same with Americana, which I voted in favor of also, for the same reasons, that this is an exception to our general, as a body, policy of really pushing for onsite, which I fully do support and will continue to do so. But for this particular site, I think it's appropriate for the contribution in order to help facilitate the construction on, on the Crystal Houses site. Thank you.
Commissioner Starley? I will align myself with Commissioner Lantelme's comments. Commissioner Starley?
Yes, I will align myself with Commissioner Lantelme's comments also, although I strongly agree with Commissioner Burkey's sentiment on this. And I think the policy needs to come from the board, I think, on this. And we ought to ask them, you know, point-blank to just absolutely require every development to have onsite affordable housing, which I think DC has that policy. Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I feel like on this instance, I'll just associate with Commissioner Lantelme's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, were you looking to be recognized? No? Okay.
I want to align myself with Commissioner Lantelme and Commissioner Starley's comments.
Commissioner Begley.
Aye.
Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
I mean, nay.
Commissioner Guerin.
Nay.
Commissioner Lantelme.
Nay.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Striner.
This one's tough. I'm going to say nay.
Commissioner Me, nay. Steinberger, for the record. The motion fails five to three. I think I did the math right. Thank you. We are now at the point of voting on the main motion as amended. Just a reminder, with the acceptance of Commissioner Lantelme's amendment, so that is what we are voting on now. Okay, we'll move to Commissioner Begley.
Aye.
Oh, did someone, wait. I'm sorry, Commissioner Begley, yes, please.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantelme.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Striner.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger, aye. The main motion carries 8-0. Thank you very much to staff and the applicant and to everyone on the commission for a spirited, if not somewhat lengthy, conversation on many topics related to this. Thank you. Well, we're not done. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item, or final item for the evening, I believe?
The final item is just to approve the May 1st meeting minutes, please.
Does anyone have a, would like to make, would someone like to make a motion with regards to the meeting minutes from May 1st? Can, can we do, okay.
I move that we approve the minutes of our May
First.
1st, 2023, meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. Any, well, we'll do roll. It's fine. Commissioner Begley? Yes, we're voting on passing the minutes, accepting the minutes.
Aye.
Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lantelme.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Epstein.
Commissioner Burkey.
Aye.
Commissioner Striner.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger, aye. The motion passes 7-0 with one abstention. Okay. Okay. Is there any update from staff for this evening that we need to?
Very brief update. I mentioned last month that we had two new staff members starting in current planning. They have since joined. We were rejoined by Chrissy Wallantish and Nicole Bowling, both former employees who are back to rejoin the planning team. We also have one new, oh, I have two new updates under the comprehensive planning. So, on the comprehensive planning side, we have a new employee started, that started last week, Rana, you're going to have to help me out in her last name, Abu Ghazala. And she is filling Tim Murphy's former position. And we also stole from the research team, Emily Garrett, who will be joining us as a comprehensive planner, filling Pablo's old position. Thank you.
Wonderful. We look forward to working and working again with these new staff members. I believe we had written reports submitted by LRPC, ZOCO, and SPRC, and AWG, what is the one that Daniel said? AUG. And AUG. Did, any reports that did not get in writing that we need to cover this evening? PFRC? Well, oh, PFRC's report is that we did Career Center last night. Thank you. And I sent a report around for that. PFRC is looking forward to not having any projects for some period of time.
Quick ZOCO update.
Okay, ZOCO update.
Quick ZOCO update. We have a meeting next Tuesday at 6, June 6th, I think, Tuesday.
At 6:00 or on the 6th?
On the 6th, at 7:00.
Okay, at 7:00, okay.
It's Pentagon City Sector Plan implementation, so I think some of you might be interested in that. And then we will continue the conversation, future of outdoor dining study.
Thank you. I believe that meeting invite went out to everyone. Commissioner Peterson, do we have any rosters we need to vote on? No rosters. Nice. Okay. Commissioner Begley, did you have something? No. I'm done. Are we done? Okay. The commission stands in recess until, we stand in adjourned, we are adjourned until July.